Good evening. This time, if you would, please silence your cell phones and be advised that these proceedings tonight are being recorded. For those of you physically present in the council chamber who desire to address the city council during the meeting, please complete a request to speak form. They are available at the front entrance and present it to the city clerk. Speakers physically present and those participating via Zoom will be called upon at the appropriate time, and each person is allowed three-minute speaking time. Our city clerk will now make a Zoom broadcasting announcement. Madam City Clerk?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. As of June 15th, the City of Grand Terrace reopened its public meetings. If you would like to participate telephonically and speak on an agenda item, you can access the meeting by dialing 1-669-900-9128, enter meeting ID number 847-5738-7427, and password number 138769. You will be placed in the waiting room muted until it is your turn to speak. You may also submit your comments by sending them to ccpubliccomment@grandterres-ca.gov. The City of Grand Terrace thanks you for doing your part preventing the spread of COVID-19.
All right, thank you. At this time, I will now call to order the City of Grand Terrace City Council Meeting for February 8th, 2022, and I'll let you know at this time, we will be closing in memory of, among other things, former city council member, Mayor of Grand Terrace, Gene Carlstrom. Gene Edward Carlstrom left us on January 11th. Among other things, he was a real estate agent and broker and president of the Terra Loma Real Estate Company that operated here in town. As I said, former council member and mayor of the city. He was an active member of Grand Terrace Lions Club, active member of the Grand Terrace Chamber of Commerce, and one of the founding members of the Foundation of Grand Terrace, and those are the things that I know about him in this city. A little bit later in life, he actually did some acting, which I think was preshadowed by the fact that he was the voice of the Grand Terrace Days Parade, and he could watch the parade come down Barton Road, and he knew who was coming up, and he knew what the cars were and who was in the cars. I don't know that he really even had a script. I think he just knew everybody. And once he met you and knew your name, he always remembered who you were and what your name was. So he was just a really neat person to know, and he will be missed. But we will be closing in his memory tonight. Tonight, our invocation will be given by Dr. Fred Adams of the Rock Church, and immediately following that, we will have a pledge of allegiance led by Lieutenant Lane of the San Bernardino County Sheriff Department. If you would, please rise for the invocation and remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Thank you, City Council. Dear Heavenly Father, we accept 2022 as a year of change. We, as a people, will not be daunted by the past, but we will move forward in collaborative unity with trust in your grace, mercy, and love for the people and city of Grand Terrace. Holy Spirit, we invite your presence here today, and we ask that you grant wisdom and guidance to our mayor and each member of this council for the decisions that will be made here today in this chamber, as well as the decisions that will be made the rest of this year. In Jesus' name we pray, and everyone in agreement said, "Amen."
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Thank you, Dr. Adams. Thank you, Lieutenant Lane. Madam City Clerk, may we have roll call, please?
Councilmember Allen?
I'm here.
Councilmember Wilson?
I'm here.
Councilmember Robles?
Here.
Mayor Protem Hussey?
Present.
Mayor Magna Bo.
Present.
Madam Mayor, you have a quorum.
Thank you. Do we have any reordering of additions to or removal of items from the agenda?
No additions or deletions.
Ah, very nice. And we have no special presentations tonight, so we'll move to the consent calendar. Consent calendar items are expected to be routine and noncontroversial. They will be acted upon by the city council at one time without discussion. Any city council member, staff member, or citizen may request removal of an item from the consent calendar for discussion. Are there requests for removal of the consent calendar items at this time? All right, seeing none, I'll entertain a motion.
I'll move the motion for the consent calendar, all the items.
All right, thank you.
Second.
All right, motion by Councilmember Allen, second by Councilmember Wilson. May we have roll call vote?
Councilmember Allen?
Yes.
Councilmember Wilson?
Yes.
Councilmember Robles?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Hussey?
Yes.
Mayor Magna Bo?
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you. Do we have requests to speak for public comment at this time?
No, Madam Mayor.
All right. This would have been the opportunity for members of the public to comment on items not appearing on the regular agenda. And Madam City Clerk says she has no request to speak at this time, so we'll close public comment, and we'll move on to public hearing, which is the first item of business on our agenda to follow. So item number 10 on our agenda is the prioritization of funding recommendations for community development block grant, or CDBG funds for program year '22, '23. And so how we will take this is, I will state the public hearing item and ask for any announcement of ex parte communications, conflict of interest or any recusals necessary. Staff will present their recommendations on the public hearing item. Council has an opportunity for questions of staff, and then we will open the public hearing to allow any public testimony in favor or against the public hearing item. We will close the public hearing, and council will come back and deliberate on the item, and we will vote based on whatever motion might be raised. So to begin with, public hearing item, prioritization of funding recommendations for community development block grant funds for program year '22, '23. And this would be the time, if you have any announcements, have any of my colleagues received ex parte communications? Do you have any conflicts of interest and/or do you need to recuse? Councilmember Allen?
So most of you know that I volunteer over at the senior center occasionally on Wednesdays to hand out the meals that FSA prepares and brings over for the senior center coordinator to pass out to the seniors in the community, and occasionally I go over there and help out. There hasn't been any conversation between us over this, but I wanted everyone to know that, if those who didn't, I mean, I thought everyone did. I used to, I often thought about making my office hours over there, but I never did. But that's the only...
Full disclosure, then?
Yeah, that's it.
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
Any other announcements at this time? All right, seeing none, we'll move on to our staff presentation and recommendations.
Thank you, Mayor Magna Bo, Mayor Protem, and members of the city council. My name's Noel Carpenter. I'm the Senior Management Analyst here at the City of Grand Terrace, and tonight I'll present you with staff information regarding the CDBG funding recommendations for the year of 2022, 2023 program year. I would first like to state that these recommendations are in line with the, excuse me, with the 2030 Vision Statement and supports Grand Terrace Goal Number Four, to develop and implement successful partnerships, working collaboratively with community groups and private and public sector agencies to facilitate the delivery of services benefiting youth, seniors, and our community. The CDBG program is a federal program that is intended to benefit low, moderate-income persons, fund programs that eliminate blight or meet an urgent need. CDBG guidelines specify that cooperating cities receiving less than $150,000 in grant allocations are restricted to four programs. The expected allocation is $60,140. Separate from the annual allocation, the city has a balance of $35,727 in unprogrammed funds. Unlike the annual allocation, the unprogrammed funds can only be used for construction projects. In regards to background for 2021, 2022, last year for the 2021, 2022 program, the greatest focus was on receiving CDBG COVID funding, and we did not host a prioritization hearing, and applicants and funding was automatically allocated by the county. As you can see here on the screen, how those fundings were allocated to the three categories listed. San Bernardino County Grand Terrace Library Literacy Education Project received $10,000. Family Services Association for the Senior Nutrition Program received $10,000, and Family Services Association for the Senior Center Coordinator received $39,329,000, for a total of $59,329, with unprogrammed funds of $287. 2022, 2023 eligible applications are listed below. We have San Bernardino County Grand Terrace Library Adult Literacy Program. Funding requested was $10,000. Family Services Association for the Senior Nutrition Program requested $10,000. Family Services Association for the Senior Center Coordinator requested $50,000, for a total of $70,000. The allocation was granted at $60,140, leaving a deficit of $9,860. As you can see on this slide, the funding has been determined to be allocated as follows. The San Bernardino County Grand Terrace Library will receive the $10,000 they requested. Family Services Association for Senior Nutrition Programs also received $10,000. Family Services Association for the Senior Center Coordinator requested $50,000. They are going to be allocated $40,140, for the total of $60,140. Recommendations. The recommendation of staff is to conduct a public hearing for the prioritization of the eligible applications for 2022, 2023 Community Development Block Grant, known as CDBG funding, and prioritize funding allocations and authorize staff to submit the city's CDBG funding recommendations to the County of San Bernardino Economic Development Agency. This concludes my presentation. The city manager and myself are available for any questions anyone may have.
All right, thank you, Ms. Carpenter. Are there questions of staff at this time? Can we ask the county to fund that 9,000-plus deficit? It's not that much. It's not that much in their budget.
It is not, and we can always ask, but the answer would be no at this point in time.
Thank you. Councilmember Allen?
Thank you, excuse me, thank you for that good report. One of the things, after reading through this, that I couldn't find, maybe it's in there, there's a lot of different font sizes, but I couldn't find the, how many, in the Adult Literacy Program, how many were served last year?
There were 78 served last year. This year, they're hoping to serve 79, and they can serve up to 80.
Okay, and so that's a series of classes that they offer them, isn't that correct, over a period of time?
That is correct.
Okay, thank you for that info.
Of course.
Councilmember Wilson?
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, my question is also around the same neck of the woods. Is that a donation that we make, or how does the whole, how does the program work? So when we say we service 78 or 79 people, I'm not exactly sure how that all fits together under a $10,000 helm.
Well, the $10,000 is only a portion of the funding for the literacy program here in the City of Grand Terrace. Other funding comes from the county and the state. In the staff report that is included in the city council agenda, you'll find the details of the funding for the entire program. The CDBG grant allows $10,000 of funding. Other funding, I believe in the staff report, comes to a little bit over $25,000. The library does provide a lot of services to the members that come in. There are classes, there's tutoring, there's job placement, help with those individuals, as well as help with literacy and families as a whole.
All right. So that means that if we withdrew our funding, it would just short the program in the overall?
That is correct.
So if we took that money and applied it to the senior center coordinator, that would be a bad thing?
It would be a very negative thing for the community members who use literacy program.
Okay, thank you.
Of course.
Okay, any further questions? All right, seeing none, I will officially open the public hearing and ask for public testimony. Are there any requests to speak at this time?
No, Madam Mayor.
All right. Then I will close the public hearing and bring it back to council for deliberation on these items and determine how we would like to proceed.
Madam Mayor?
Councilmember Allen?
Do you need a motion, a second, to open for discussion? Or do you want to discuss it?
You could make a motion for us to discuss around, sure.
Okay, I'll make a motion to to submit the staff recommendations to the County of San Bernardino's Economic Development Agency. Or how should we, is that, will that work to Mr. City Attorney?
Yes, I think if you move staff's recommendation for approval.
Okay.
All right. All right, so I have a motion for staff recommendation?
I'll second that.
All right. Second, and is there any discussion at this time? All right, seeing no takers. Motion by Councilmember Allen, second by Councilmember Robles. Maybe we have a roll call vote, please?
Councilmember Allen?
Yes.
Councilmember Wilson?
Yes.
Councilmember Robles?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Hussey?
Yes.
Mayor Magna Bo?
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously.
All right, thank you very much. So next on our agenda is unfinished business, of which we have none, so we'll move on to new business, which is the guidelines for filling the city council vacancies by appointment. Mr. Adrian Guerra, City Attorney?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. This item follows up on our January 11th meeting, and I'll give some background on that. The staff report supports council goal number five, engage in proactive communication by allowing community input on potential procedures on filling council vacancies. As you recall, on January 11th, the council discussed state law provisions regarding the filling of a city council vacancy by either a special election or an appointment process, and the council requested that I prepare draft guidelines to govern the appointment process for council consideration. So as a brief refresher for the council and for the public, who may not have watched the January 11th meeting, state law provides two options to fill a vacancy. The council can appoint an individual, or they can call a special election and have the residents elect someone to the office. Either action must occur within 60 days. There's really no process under the state law on how an appointment shall be made. There are only three guidelines. Number one is stated earlier, it must occur within 60 days. Two, the term of the office must be compliant with the code, and we won't get into that tonight, but there are specific timelines on how long the individual would be in place. And third, the appointee must otherwise be eligible for holding office, such as being a resident, age requirements, et cetera. So for tonight, and in the agenda, we prepared a set of guidelines which address two issues. One is timing, and the second are guidelines for consideration of an individual applicant. So in terms of timing, we are limited to the 60 days. What we propose is, within seven days of the commencement of the vacancy, a regular special meeting be called by the council for the purpose of just providing direction of staff on seeking applications from candidates to fill a vacancy or to provide other direction. So at least it gets the dialogue going with the council as to which direction they want to proceed. Within 15 days of that meeting, they hold a meeting to discuss potential candidates to be interviewed, if again, the council wants to interview individuals before appointment. Within 15 days of that meeting, those interviews are conducted, so the council would be able to meet with them. And just note, that would be an open session meeting. It would not be a closed session item. It would be open session. Within 15 days of that, you would then appoint an individual to the council, so you have 60 days. There's about an eight-day gap under this scenario, that if the council is unable to reach a determination on an appointment, they could still call a special election. So you have a little bit of flexibility in terms of time. In terms of selection guidelines, these are six that we identified. Obviously, the council can strike them, add to them, modify them however they see fit, but these were guidelines that we came up with. The first was the individual's availability to serve as a council member in light of other commitments. Do they have the time to serve as a council member? Second, their knowledge and experience with current city issues and governance. Third, the individual's level of community engagement, such as participation in community organizations. The individual's level of civic engagement. Have they participated in these city committees, commissions, or boards? The individual's goals and objectives if appointed as a city council member, understanding that. And lastly, a point that we discussed at the last meeting, if the individual sought a seat on the city council at the last regular election, you know, how did they fare? Were they a significant vote getter or not? You know, again, rather than put specific numbers, I think you just have to look at it on a case-by-case basis, but again, that's a factor to consider. Tonight, we have prepared a proposed resolution with those guidelines in place. If acceptable, we can adopt the resolution tonight, but as a reminder, the council may modify the guidelines at any time in the future. The council could even eliminate them. I would say that in preparing the report and preparing the guidelines, I actually think it's a good idea, and the reason is, in my experience, city councils are usually caught off guard when a council member, when there's a vacancy created. And so to have a set of guidelines in place to at least govern the process, I think is a really good concept. But again, you know, this is just a set of guidelines. It's not intended to be restrictive. It's not intended to be, you have to comply with it. It's just something to give a framework for how to make a decision in a timely manner. So with that, I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Guerra. Are there questions of staff at this time? Councilmember Allen?
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Ms. City Attorney, for that staff report, and can you please explain to me again why number six is significant? Why that would be important for a guideline to consider?
Again, based on our last discussion, it was thought to be an important point, not an important point, but a point to be considered, to see, number one, if they've, if a significant portion of the population was interested in that person as a city council member. If they've run a couple of times and they always get maybe five votes, you know, maybe that's something to be considered. But if they get significant portion of votes, but came in third, and there were only two seats, again, it's not a clear yes or no, it's just something to be considered. And if you, if the council does not believe it needs to be considered, we could always take it out.
Well, I think somebody who got five votes in the last election got five more than the person who didn't run.
There you go.
So it also could be offered up in that way that, to make sure the council knows that they could use that as their determination for how they want to do a point?
Sure.
Okay. Councilmember Robles?
The discussion was that we are taking away the right of the people for a direct vote, and it shouldn't be about whether you liked who ran against you and that you beat by 75 votes or not, or whether someone wants to have three votes in their pocket. Those should not be the considerations. The consideration should be, within a reasonable timeframe from the last election, did the voter speak, and did they speak loud enough within a gauge of votes? So the discussion was, and I think I would like to, I'm completely satisfied with this. I'd like to see a preamble that our values are to respect the voter, and in any way possible, to take that into consideration, because we're saying it's too expensive to hear their voice, and that we should be the instrument of their voice, not our voice. And that's what the issue is, just like, you can be invited to put a political sign in a city park, but it's still illegal to have a political sign at the park, and that's why we have ethics.
Councilmember Allen?
Thanks, Madam Mayor. And union organizing meetings at City Park? So the purpose, the reason I mentioned number six is, the, is I'm not, I don't know that that is something that, I mean, of course, a previous election and the number of votes someone got, I mean, that's respectable in any amount, for me, anyway, but that was also in the past, and so while I don't know that that would be something that I would consider heavily in weighing, or any more than any of the other criteria, is what I'm saying. I don't see that whether somebody ran in a previous city election, city council election, and the number of votes they got, I mean, you know, it's something to, maybe to consider, but things can change over a period of months or years. And that's all.
Yeah, and that was a discussion. It wasn't going to be the overriding, it was going to be part of the framework, part of the discussion, that's it.
All right, I have a question about process. In the past, when there have been interviews or when there's an appointment process, anybody that is wanting to put their name forward for consideration, are they required to have signatures of support?
No, Madam, no, Madam Mayor.
Okay. Because that might be an interesting, I know it's sort of a diversion, but I thought that might be an interesting way to move forward with the process, too, especially if it's somebody that didn't run in the last election. Yeah, but that's a whole nother discussion. I just thought I'd ask that. Thank you very much. Any further questions of staff? All right, seeing none, I'll open it up to public comment. Are there any requests to speak on this item?
No, Madam Mayor.
All right, so we'll close public comment and bring it back for further deliberation and consideration of a motion. Councilmember Robles, I liked your idea of the preamble, that's kind of a nice addition to the whole thing.
And, I don't know, I was just thinking, too, because isn't we have to be residents for 30 days before the opening of the election, before we file?
I can't say that with 100% certainty, because some things have been changing with regards to intention to move somewhere.
Oh, okay. Because I was just thinking, so, say, we had an election two years ago, and someone moved in last week, that we could have...
As long as they are a registered voter and they are registered in the city, the county will accept that.
Okay, perfect, okay, thank you.
Councilmember Allen?
On page 242 and 3 is the timelines for the meetings, and my question to you is, because I know it states in the paragraph under number four, the timelines can be extended or shortened. So are we, how flexible are we with those timelines? Can we, could we even, if there wasn't a need for a third meeting, are we flexible enough, or, you know, can we, are we, is it that, is it that? Or is it, how much, or can we, like, extend the days from 15 to 20 if we, and if we thought we needed it, or shorten it, or?
Yes, you have that flexibility. Again, this is just a guideline, and again, depending on what part of the year, you know, something like this occurs, if it happens during the holidays, you know, you may be a little... if it happens during the holidays, you know, you may be a little, you know, the timing may not work, the 15th day may fall on a holiday, or a Saturday or Sunday. So yes, you, you have that flexibility. Again, this is not mandated by state law. This is just our own framework for how we want to address it.
Okay.
Is there anyone who would like to make a motion on this item?
We, is there any language for the preamble?
I don't think they brought that.
Madam Mayor, really quick, just to go back to Councilmember Allen's question, on page 248, the, the guidelines, we do have in there section D of part three adjustments, the timelines provided here and may be extended or shortened by the city council, provided that they do not, they're not extended past a 60-day period. So, I knew it was in there, I just couldn't find it.
Mayor?
Councilmember Wilson.
I'd just like to, having been influenced by this, and I'm really glad that this is brought before the city council at this point, what we're dancing around is ethical behavior. We're dancing around undue influence. I don't know that we're going to be successful in legislating that. I think it's wonderful to think that we all pretty much are on the same page, that we work well together, that we are a bunch of professional people that take some pride in, in serving the community, you know, true nature of heart, kinds of things. When, when the, when a person's agenda, personal agenda seeps into a process like this, how, and this is my question to you, how have other jurisdictions been able to solve the problem? Because realistically, you've got a last-minute situation where you've got a vacancy, and, and all of a sudden, you're going to have to try to fill it, and you don't want to spend $12,000 to $35,000 to do it, or like, what was it, $110 million or something for something the government did here recently? How do we, how do we solve that kind of circumstance? And we're kind of hoping we don't have to.
From my experience, I, I think you're correct that, that there's always going to be that, that ethical concern about the council making a decision instead of the residents, when usually the residents are the ones that elect the councilor. So no matter what, you're correct. You can't get around that. What I have seen in my experience, and the point I thought you were going to say, the issue dancing around sadly is death, is the death of a council member, and that's what I've seen in my career. And so that's why I was hinting at earlier, that's why councils are caught off guard many times. What I have seen, though, is that councils will appoint someone who has previously been on council, since they have, they have had support in the community to be on the council. They know the workings of the council, and usually, the one who's appointed will tell the council, I'm only here to serve until the end of the term, until the next election, and I'm not going to rerun. So there's that support, there's that, that comfort level from the council that they're not here to run for the future, they're just here to help the council get through the next period. So that's how I've seen most councils. It's usually a, a council member or a commissioner that, that...
That's what, that's actually what happened with this council at a point. Dan Buchanan was a, he's a prominent attorney as well as a, as an individual that had served the community in several capacities, but in case of the city council, he was, he did that. He went ahead and served for a limited amount of time, and then bowed out at, at the end of it. I think the, the subterfuge is when, like I said, it's a personal, a personal agenda seeps into the process, and then they skate around the notice situation. And I think we're doing our best. I think what we've got here is, is what, is the best that we can do. I think we're considering all things, and short of making somebody give a pint of blood to the effect, I think this is the best we can do.
Yeah, I agree.
So, thank you.
So is that your motion?
Yes.
I'll second it. I, I think it has the parameters that are necessary.
Thank you. All right. Any further discussion? Councilmember Allen.
The city attorney mentioned a procedure that some jurisdictions have used, where they'll select a previous council member. And so what I was...
Right, but I think they do that just as part of somebody that comes forward to stand for perhaps being appointed, and the council ends up choosing them.
Oh, so, because I was just going to ask if maybe something like that might be added to the appointment criteria? A statement like that, something like...
Well, something that could be considered.
Correct. So if you look at, I guess, bullet number four, we say individual level of civic engagement, such as participation on council committees, commissions, I would just say past or present city committees or city council, something like that.
Oh, okay.
All right, so maker of the motion, will you, are you okay with that change?
Yeah, to make a change? No, at any point.
No, you don't want to?
I think the more, I think the more hair we put on this thing, the less opportunity we have for the, the public to be involved in. And so I think that in this case, I think we've got about it as open as, as we can do, and with the addition of the, the last item there with the side of the seat, council number of votes the individual received, I think that's a good consideration, but it's not a hard consideration. And I think that's what was programmed for this.
All right, so I have a motion for what is, what staff has brought forward, and I have a second. I'm going to go ahead and ask for a vote.
Councilmember Allen?
Yes.
Councilmember Wilson?
Yes.
Councilmember Robles?
Yes.
Mayor Proton Hesse?
Yes.
Mayor McNebo?
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for your work on this. All right, next item, request for future agenda items by city council. We have none to consider tonight. So we'll move to city council communications, beginning with Jeff Allen.
I don't have anything to report. I just extend my condolences to Gene's family and friends who were affected by his recent passing.
All right. Thank you, Councilmember Allen. Councilmember Doug Wilson.
I do too. Gene was a character, and we need more characters. And he was a character in a good sense. Great thing about it is, he wasn't afraid to serve. You know, some people might have been taken aback by him, by, a little bit, but he always wore that cowboy hat, and he, and he wasn't afraid to talk, so, so I, I agree. And other than that, I don't have anything.
Thank you, Councilmember Wilson. Councilmember Sylvia Robles?
Yeah, I, I attended Gene's funeral. The last time I saw him, I was sitting at Woody's, and some gentleman asked where I was from, and then Gene walked in with his cowboy hat, and he says, where did you grow up? And he says, here. He goes, I'm a prune picker. I grew, and I saw he was born in Loma Linda. I don't think there was ever any prunes in Loma Linda, but he will be missed. He was just a joy to see, and, and quite a character. And you might have seen me fussing around here, I don't know why, but last meeting I killed a cockroach, and this time, I don't know if I stepped on one, but all the parts are here. So that's why I was fumbling early in the meeting. Thank you, Mayor.
All right, so we'll remember that when our contract for pest control comes up. Mayor Proton Bell Hesse.
Yeah, Gene was a, a kind gentleman, so, I mean, the conversations, you know, during the birthday parties and stuff, he's always smiling and stuff, but, you know, just prayers for comfort for his family, in time of need, and, that's all, Madam Mayor, thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Proton. All right, I have a couple of updates from OmniTrans and SBCTA. The first one is an Uber rideshare program that OmniTrans is, is piloting. And so the first, first place they're going to have it is in the city of Rancho Cucamonga, Fontana, Redlands, and Grand Terrace. So we need to find out more about that program. It allows eligible seniors and individuals with disabilities from participating cities to receive subsidies up to half the cost, up to $15 for trips taken on Uber service. And the program is a pilot that will be made available to the rest of the OmniTrans service area upon successful completion. So if staff has not heard from OmniTrans about that, then I will make sure that we get some information so that we can make sure that our seniors know about it, and other, other residents know about it as well.
Please forward that, we have not heard from OmniTrans.
Absolutely. So GoSmart marketing and communications team is working with two partners. The GoSmart college program is, helps Cal State San Bernardino and Cal State, all right, excuse me, and San Bernardino Community College District students. And they are renewing their program contracts with OmniTrans later this year. The initial meetings have been positive. What they like to do is they like to give a discount or maybe free rides to students to help them to get to class and get home. And so they are working on renewing that. The program has provided more than 10 million trips over the past nine years, so it sounds like it's pretty popular. And then with the San Bernardino County Transportation Authority, one of the big technology, innovative technologies that they have been looking at is a tunnel to the Ontario International Airport, which kind of sounds interesting. But what that does is it allows somebody that's riding maybe a MetroLink, they can stop in, in Rancho Cucamonga, and then board a tunnel that doesn't have any traffic to interfere with it on its final destination to the Ontario Airport. Originally, the Boring Company was going to be the single source for that, but there were some issues with, with the discussions and the negotiations, and so that's going back out for an RFP, so that maybe others will be able to bid on it. And then they looked at some changes in the RFP process to eliminate some of the costs associated with bidding on the project. I too will miss Gene Carlstrom. I, I like the characterization of him as, as quite a character. He was, he was definitely a positive force with his big smile and his, in his friendly ways, and, and so my thoughts and prayers for his family. And I want to congratulate our city attorney. He, he received some recognition recently as a prominent figure in his, in his profession. So congratulations to you. And with that, I will close, and move on to our city manager for communications that he may have for us.
Madam Mayor and council, just one quick one. Tomorrow night, Barton Road is going to be closed just east of Grand Terrace. The closure is going to start about 7:30, we'll take it down to One Lane, and from 9 o'clock until 6:00 in the morning, it'll be completely closed. We're placing a damaged power pole. It's one of those short notice things, and we've only had like two days' notice on this. So for your late-night drives, if you can stay away from there, it would, it would help everybody. Thank you.
All right. Thank you very much. So closed session? We have no closed session tonight. So with that, we will adjourn to our next regular city council meeting, that will be held on Tuesday, February 22nd, 2022, at 6:00 PM, right here. Any request to have an item placed on a future agenda must be made in writing and submitted to the city clerk's office, and the request will be processed in accordance with the council procedures. And again, we close in the memory of former council member, among other many active roles that he played in our community, Mr. Gene Carlstrom. We are adjourned.